Good evening. Good evening. Good evening. Welcome to the July... Welcome to the July 19th Mount Vernon City School District School Board Meeting. Please stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Saunders?
Here.
Trustee White?
Present.
Trustee Redd? Trustee Kerwin? Trustee Lency?
Here.
Trustee Gail?
Here.
Trustee Atisobi?
Present.
Quorum is present.
You did not get what happened to, um...
I know she's here, but I can't hear her.
Her face was there. Okay. We have to see her.
Right there.
I don't have it. Okay, there she is. There she goes.
We have administration of oath for our new trustees. I'll start with trustee Gail.
Last week, we had a technical difficulty with the visual. So our new trustees did not get, didn't have the community see them get their oath. So we're going to do it again tonight. Thank you.
Raise your right hand. I, Orville Gail, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of school board trustee according to the best of my ability. Thank you.
I, Gloria Atisobi, do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of New York, and I will faithfully discharge the duties of school board trustee according to the best of my ability.
Thank you, Taylor. We have two more seats open for trustees, and we are still trying to wrap up the interviews. So we should be having those appointed hopefully by next meeting in August.
Okay. Communications from the public. Our first public speaker tonight is David Williams.
Come up to the podium.
Oh, no, you come up to the podium.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, hi. My name is Carl McCaskill, class of Mount Vernon High School, 1971. And this is David Williams, class 76, brother of Gus Ray and Sam Williams, who are in the Mount Vernon High School Hall of Fame. We're here tonight based on the recommendation of Mayor Young and Mayor Davis.
Can you speak a little bit more into the mic? So people can... So the community can... That's fine. You can hold it in your hand.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, my name is Carl McCaskill, Mount Vernon High School, class of 1971. This is David Williams, class 1976, brother of Gus Ray and Sam Williams, who are members of the Hall of Fame. Based upon the recommendation of Mayor Davis and Mayor Young, we'd like to place a member of the class of 1971 into nominating for the High School Hall of Fame. His name is Robert Barish. You may recognize the name. His father owned a stationary business that was on Gramerton Avenue for many years. I've given you his bio. It's an incredible bio. But for us, you know, we knew him. He was one of the, one of two white kids that came to the South Side to play basketball, even though he lived on the North Side. His father also were the business sponsor of a Saturday morning basketball program at Columbus that we played in for a couple of years. His, Bob would say, his claim to fame is that he made the ninth grade basketball team at Davis ahead of Gus. So he held it over Gus's head forever, like, "I made a team, you didn't." He's had an amazing career. One, a couple of things I want to point out, you know, aside from his father, you know, supporting this diverse, you know, philosophy in terms of funding a basketball league and funding our team, was in the early 70s, Bob served in Doctors Without Borders. He was in Vietnam, Cambodia border for a couple of years doing that. He also is a Colonel in the Air Force Reserves. And, and more important, you know, he's a, he's a major, major, major hospital administrator. He's currently the number two guy at the University of Illinois Chicago Medical School. He was the head guy at Louisiana State University School. And as perhaps all you know, Gus, you know, who's my beloved friend and David's brother, had a stroke last, in February 2020. And we were struggling to find a great facility for Gus. And Bob intervened and got us, and got us into the, into John Hopkins, you know, where he's receiving incredible treatment. Like a lot of us who are older now, we want to render service to Mount Vernon. So there is a concept that Bob and I are discussing of terms of, you know, doctors, you know, not, you know, without borders, but doctors from Mount Vernon High in terms of perhaps recruiting young folks who want to become, you know, medical doctors, but really coming back to community to find that talent or to help people already in med school. Like I said, he's a vice chancellor at one of the more important institutions, and he's also formerly served at a couple of other institutions. So there's a lot of potential there. And so, you know, we were thinking that, you know, part of him coming back to Mount Vernon was to nominate him for the, you know, High School Hall of Fame. And I'll answer any questions you may have about him.
I think that's a great idea. We were just talking about...
I mean, my understanding is this is the proper venue for the nomination. That's what Clinton said.
I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a great idea.
And I know we're working, we're going to be working on it because it's low run down now, the Hall of Fame. Put a little more into it, but this, to me, is a great idea.
I think the rest of the board will talk about it and, you know, collaborate on how we're going to do and what we're going to do. But one of the trustees said they were going to take that as an initiative. Was that you?
No, I think it was, it was Darcy.
It was Darcy? Oh, okay. My mistake.
No, that's okay.
Yeah, he actually, apparently, he donated money to the...
Does he have his contact information here?
Yeah. Hall of Fame. And so, and he's somebody you could work directly with in terms of if you need to raise funds and so on and so on regarding that. I mean, we're all very proud, you know, of our high school, and so we all want to come back and be involved.
So you left your contact information with the district clerk?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You have your contact information with the district clerk?
We will provide it to you, or you can deal directly with him. You don't necessarily have to deal with us.
Okay. All right. So we'll be in touch?
Yes.
Thank you so much for coming in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The Education Foundation...
I didn't read the statement before public comment began. "The Mount Vernon Board of Education recognizes the critical importance of community discourse and involvement in the education of Mount Vernon's children, and accordingly, members of the public are invited to speak at each regularly scheduled board meeting, subject to the terms of board policy. A speaker must register in advance by no later than 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting by contacting the district clerk in person, by phone, or by email. The board welcomes all respectful comment, whether praise or criticism. However, identifying and criticizing a specific student, parent, teacher, administrator, or other Mount Vernon education official or employee is strictly prohibited. Any such complaint must be, must be presented and addressed through the proper administrative channels. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to speak. Up to one additional minute may be used for the speaker to summarize and conclude their remarks. If appropriate, board trustees and/or the superintendent or other staff members at the direction of the superintendent may immediately respond to a speaker's remarks."
Our next speaker is Tom Keller.
Well, congratulations to the new trustees, who did it informally last week, but formally tonight. It's amazing to be here, royalty. Gus and Ray Williams, two best guards ever to play basketball in Mount Vernon. Scoot and Rodney McRae, the two best forwards to play. Their mother owned a house behind me in the past. Sorry to hear about Gus. He won a, he won an NBA championship with the Supersonics, and of course Rodney McRae won a bunch of them with Michael, Michael Jordan in Chicago. All right, I hope the trustees will comment on this article yesterday, Journal News. Everybody see it? We're in chaos. I don't think we're in chaos because four people resigned. Total irresponsibility of the four people who resigned. Initially, Melissa said it was personal things, it was family...
Please refrain from using names.
Not, not according to this. They were elected for three-year terms, and they bailed out after one or two years. Total irresponsibility. Maybe the board should pass a resolution. These people can't run again for five years because they didn't finish... Brenda Crump was different. She had to take care of her mother. But these people, sore heads. They didn't win in May. They couldn't get elected president and vice president. And if they had four people, who knows? They may not convince one of, one of the other five, and they would have won. But they didn't even play the game. Sore heads, they left. Disappointing. This article here, you know, they're talking about Delia Farkason.
Be mindful of your time, Mrs....
Okay. They're talking about Delia Farkason. She served on the board for four years. You wouldn't know this from the article. She's a city council member. I can't remember any city council people ever coming to this meeting. Delia, I think, had a one, filled out unexpired term of somebody and then got elected to a three-year term. You know, they didn't call Leslie Zamora. They didn't call Arlene Torres. They didn't call Len Sarver. Eli Skudsyat. You know, this guy, what's his name, Stern? He writes on religion. John Bandler is the beat writer for Mount Vernon. Maybe he's on vacation, but maybe he ought to talk with John. And then we get Colleen Edwards, the Reverend Colleen Edwards. No mention here that he's had a contract for pre-K3 for how many years? Since Hamilton came in? Does it go up to bidder each year? How about Our Lady of Victory? Does that go up to bid each year? Couple of years ago, I said, "You're ruining the black churches because they have these pre-K programs by having this pre-K3 and pre-K4." Colleen Edwards, not mentioned, that he has a contract with the district. So a couple of these items here. Oh, by the way, summer school used to be six weeks. I go by the school each year, and it would start the 4th and end the 12th of August. Last couple of years, it's been five weeks. Do we have a longer day? Is that why it's five weeks rather than six weeks? And I like to, I like to have some of the administration and the trustees comment on these things, like city council does. But don't put us to sleep like the city council. It's an hour commenting on people that speak in public. Employment agreement for Marie Gabon Swift as diversity, equity, and inclusion coordinator. What does that mean? The school district's 90% black and Hispanic. Are we getting down into Caribbean blacks, African blacks, blacks born here? This is ridiculous!
Mr. Keller.
How much is this person going to get paid?
Mr. Keller.
It's a joke!
Mr. Keller, please.
Employing agreement with so many, I don't know my glasses here, as Assistant Superintendent of Administration, Climate, and Culture. Are we going to teach the kids not to do fossil fuel? We're going to depend on solar, wind, hydro? Something like that? Is that what this is? And don't tell me this is coming, this is a requirement of the state. This is a suggestion by the New York State Board of Education. Ignore it. Save us some money. Don't load up with, with a lot of ridiculous jobs.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Thank you so much.
You know, we got a new board here.
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
We need fiscal responsibility, not a bunch of garbage.
You have to leave the mic, Mr. Keller.
Oh, yeah. Thank you. Yeah. I told you a couple of weeks ago, you better take care of it.
We remember.
Oh, my goodness.
Our next speaker is Cynthia Turnquest.
Oh, gosh. Who's this?
Good morning, everyone. Good afternoon, everyone. I'm on vacation, so you know, it's all of the above for me.
Good evening.
So first of all, I would just like to say thank you to the parents liaisons who made sure that there was an excellent gun violence awareness event that took place at Mount Vernon Public Library. So yesterday, I had a meeting with the district attorney about gun safety in our community. Apparently, the meeting that I had yesterday was the same exact thing that happened here in Mount Vernon last month for gun violence awareness, and it was standing room only. Thank you to the Mount Vernon Public School parents who came out and made sure that they got information that is extremely important. So one of the things that the DA would like to happen and would like to have a partnership with schools that are in Westchester County, making sure that we are aware of gun safety laws and the, and the pushing towards them to take place, as well as education. All of us in here, if you have, if you're a parent or you're not a parent, if you are a godmother or a grandmother or aunt or uncle, a lot of us make sure that our children go over to other individuals' houses, homes. However, the one thing that we do not ask is, "Do you have a gun? And if you do have a gun, how do you house your gun?" Now, we take pride in finding out that the individuals who our children are playing with are playing with individuals who parents have good jobs and live in a nice house. But one of the things that we do not ask is, "Are you housing a gun, and how are you housing it?" So these are the conversations that we want to start having with parents. Our Parents' Partners Gun Violence and Safety Awareness Information Session was held at Mount Vernon Public Library. Libraries are known as a place where intellectual freedom takes place. A moving sculpture was presented by Change the Ref. Since May 25th, supporters like you are hearing the message in regards to gun safety, especially when it comes to our schools. This is a movement, not a moment, and we need to make sure that gun violence prevention happens here in Mount Vernon. So I just want you to make sure that when we start school back, the month of October is known as Gun Violence Awareness Month. It's also known as Wear Orange for Peace. So we're hoping that in October, we'll be able to have sessions with our parents. And once again, shout out to the parents of Mount Vernon, of Money on Mount Vernon, because the room was packed. It was filled to capacity because individuals want to learn the antiquated laws that we have in place and how we can change that. Once again, in October, it's Peace Month, it's Wear Orange Month. Going to make sure that we have that information out and that we also collaborate with the district attorney's office so we can make this happen. Thank you. My name is Cynthia Turnquest Jones, 444 Seneca Avenue, Mount Vernon, New York. Black power.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That concludes the public comment. Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Before I start the superintendent report, I want to take this opportunity to thank all our new hires that we have in the room today. I am so blessed, I'm so impressed, and I'm so happy and excited that you're here to join the band of hard workers who are already here. So I am going to ask you, all the hires in the room, to please stand for me and let us celebrate you. Please stand. Thank you so much for that. I have a plant for you, but I'll give it to you after. Let me say my piece. Okay. So I also want to thank the two new trustees who joined us. They were here last week, their last board meeting, they're here this time. And I have to say that one of them is our neighbor, so I will be bothering you a lot, Ms. trustee Gail, and Ms. Gloria. I mean, the last name is hard to call, and I hate to, to make a mockery of somebody's last name. So I will call you trustee Gloria for now. So welcome. And I am so happy that you're here to join us, to do the hard work, and not to criticize, but to constructively work with us to make sure that our kids are successful. So thank you for joining the team. Now, last week, I was sworn in, and I never get a chance to say, say anything, but I'm going to say it today. Okay? So, Madam President... Hold on, let me get my glasses. Just give me a second.
Oh, that's right.
Madam President, trustees, cabinet members, and most importantly, the Mount Vernon City School community. By being duly sworn in last week as the superintendent of the Mount Vernon City School District, I reaffirm my commitment and dedication to the scholars, their families, and all stakeholders of the Mount Vernon City School District made at the May Board Meeting when I was appointed acting superintendent. The focus of my work will not be to tear down what has already been laid down as a foundation of change and growth in the, in the past eight years. On the contrary, as an integral part of the team and as the former Assistant Superintendent of School Improvement, my office was instrumental in planting the seeds and fertilizing the soil of the recent successes of the district. So the roots of our work and the achievements made remain strong, unshakable, and unbreakable. This evening, I will continue to accept the challenges that lie ahead due to my superintendency, but I will need your help. I am requesting that you stand with me when we fight for our scholars. It is easy to tear down, criticize, and try to divide our efforts, but the true challenge is in coming together as collegial partners, breaking down the barriers facing us as a district in order to close the achievement gap, increase academic success, and provide our students the keys to the doors of all the opportunities that await them beyond the four square miles of Mount Vernon. Leadership is not about titles. It is not about seniority. It is not about status. And if it is not about management, leadership is about power and the ability to know when and how to use it to influence the people around you to do and become more. Transformational leadership is about using your actions to elevate others and to put them on their path to greatness. And as a result of that, I close with that because that is what I intend to do. I cannot spend time on silly things or small things. I'm going to spend my time on big things. And when I looked at the crowd in here of the new hires, I know I'm on my way to victory. So thank you for coming out, each and every one of you, and for those who are not here and who were hired before. I will meet you somewhere else in some of our schools in September. And let us move on to what we are going to focus on all year, our children. Last week, Dr. Gail Wallace made a presentation, and she emphasized that we are going to focus on our children. Every board meeting, that's what we're going to do. We're going to, we're going to highlight the successes of our staff and students. So tonight, I'm going to call on Dr. Sosello and Mr. Molina to talk about a new program that we put in our schools and how we became victorious. And I will hand over to Dr. Sosello as we speak. Dr. Sosello, the mic is yours.
Good evening, Madam President, Madam Superintendent, Madam Vice President, Board Trustees, Members of Cabinet, and the Mount Vernon City community. My name is Dr. Margarita Sosello, and I am a standards administrator of bilingual E-N-L and world languages. My purpose here this evening is to talk to you about a program that, thanks to Dr. Ben Conroy, when she was Assistant Superintendent of School Improvement, allowed it to become a key and instrumental part of growth for English language learners at Hamilton Elementary School and the other 15 schools within the district. Imagine Learning is a company that ignites learning breakthroughs on each student's unique journey. It promotes constructivist learners. Constructivist learners are learners that take the opportunity to take ownership of their learning, become engaged, and remain engaged. The program simply we purchased was Imagine Language and Literacy. Imagine Language and Literacy provides instruction and practice in all four domains of literacy, which are the four hallmarks of learning for E-N-L students, reading, writing, listening, and speaking. We purchased Imagine Espanola to build up the bilingual and dual-language programs we are currently having in the district. We purchased Imagine Math because not only do our students need to know about literacy and language, they also need to know about the language of numeracy. If you can go to the next slide, please. What you see in front of you now is a data report. This is the end-of-the-year data report of the usage of Imagine Learning and some of its success stories. So just briefly, you can see that the line of growth is off the charts. The students in Mount Vernon, the E-N-L students, all 567 of them last year, grew tremendously using the program in language and literacy. Imagine Learning follows the premise of balanced literacy, so we were in line with what Dr. Ben Conroy and the Curriculum and Instruction Department were putting in place for balanced literacy and language and literacy for our students. If you can see, we started in mid-year. Numbers of students were 549. Active students were 360. Number of active students within a month were 143. Average weekly uses was 48.3 minutes. Average weekly usage was 43.6 in a month. So overall, we had our students completing 87% of the lessons and being successful with them. Next slide. Not only is it about growth in literacy, but it is also about growth in vocabulary. One of the things that face E-N-L students, especially if they are newcomers, is how to navigate this new culture and this new world that they are in. So vocabulary is very key. So when you begin a lesson, you have to front-load the lesson with as much vocabulary as possible. Well, how do you do that for an E-N-L student? You have to use visual cues, you have to scaffold, and you have to provide some of the instruction in their language. Imagine Learning provides that, not just in Spanish, but it provides language and support in Portuguese and Arabic and Haitian Creole and French and some of the other languages we have within our district. So you can see the tremendous growth, and the two grades, if you look at literacy growth, grade two and three, and kindergarten, show tremendous growth. If you look at vocabulary growth, grades three and four lead the way, and grade five is coming up, and kindergarten are even keel. So that shows us that with this, we know that next year, moving forward, our E-N-L teachers will prep more with the first, second, and seventh and eighth graders in vocabulary. But if you notice the, again, passing rate in the lessons, in grades one, we have 98%, 89%, nothing below 72%. All the students were 72% and above. If you go to the next slide. Now here is our success story. We are here this evening to celebrate Hamilton School. That is the success chart of Hamilton School. You can see... You can see off the charts completely with growth. Hamilton School is being recognized this evening as a national beacon school by Imagine Learning for their success, for their growth. If you look when we began in November, all the way to May, the increases, they started at 58 proficient, 175 in oral vocabulary, 342 literary and oral vocabulary, literacy and oral vocabulary, 543 students, 227 from before. So, tremendous amount of growth. You're looking at 485 points of growth in literacy and 52 points in an average in vocabulary. Overall, weekly, Hamilton students averaged 46.6 minutes a week, 32.4. And here is our student success story, if you go to the next slide. This is a newcomer at Hamilton Elementary School. He came to the district in December. Now, that's a basic book, a basal book. If you notice, the chart on your left talks about where he was in the beginning. The first book is a basic reading book, a basal book, where they just repeat, get to know and understand language. So, all he was reading or being taught was, "Where am I? Where am I? Here I am. Where am I? Here I am." Constant repetitive language. As of June 3rd, that young man is reading a chapter book, Frogs' Eggs. "Look, Matt, the frog has eggs. Look, Pam, look at the frog's eggs." Able to make literary connections, able to answer and complete sentences, the work that is provided for him. The data shows us that Hamilton Elementary School students, even on Christmas break and February break, were active in using the program. The teachers are able to go in at any time and see the usage of the students. I'm able to go in at any time and progress monitor teacher usage and school building usage. And we are embarking on using Imagine Math, if you go to the next slide. That's a student, we started Imagine Math piloting. You can see, we peaked at one point, then we kind of came down a little bit because we were focusing more on literacy and language, but then we came back up again with our usage of Imagine Math and student growth. So, if you just go to the next slide, it just chose you with Imagine Math. At the bottom, it gives you the modules that the student uses. This student just happens to be a student in Columbus, because we wanted to show diversity in both our schools and usage, and it actually tells them what skill. So, adding one to make the next number within 10, he got six out of six, 87, he's proficient. Where he is weak, it actually tells them in what specific area it's weak, so that the teacher can tailor and scaffold the lessons along with their co-teacher if they happen to be co-teaching in a math class. So, hopefully, we will continue to use the program moving forward, but tonight, we are here to talk about Hamilton. And on behalf of the Account Executive of Imagine Learning, Mr. Daniel Severese, and our team Danielle Ayers, but most importantly, on behalf of Madam Superintendent, we are pleased to say that Hamilton Elementary School has been selected as the 2021-2022 Imagine Nation Beacon School for your enthusiasm, growth, and innovative use of Imagine Learning. So, congratulations. So, we have Ms. Ziola, Ms. Fortuna, and Ms. Quiros. Those are the E-N-L teachers at Hamilton Elementary School. And Dr. B.C., if you could present, and Madam President. But we ask that you, at Hamilton Elementary School, please display this banner proudly as, again, you are known as the Imagine Nation, the Imagine National Beacon School for the Putting our E-N-L students on the map.
So, at the next board meeting, I'm going to challenge Dr. Kim Smith to talk about special needs at the next board meeting. We had Gifted and Talent in the last board meeting, we have E-N-L, now we're going to have Spade. All right, Dr. Smith? I just told you. All right. Thank you, Dr. Sercello, and thank you. Okay. Yes, and we didn't let announce that Mr. Molina was the principal. Come on, Mr. Molina, take a bow. Thank you, thank you so much, and that ends my report.
Next is committee reports. Do we have any committee reports? We just need to assign committees, right?
Right.
So, does anyone have a committee? I think Mark may have a committee. You have a committee report?
We have a committee report.
Okay.
I can...
Yes, please. Yeah, okay. So, she's going to send out an email with the committee request, okay? All right. Any old business? Do we have any old business?
In the spirit of a celebration, you want to give them the flowers while they're here?
So, while we are celebrating and we're in the spirit of celebration, we need to give the, our new hires, a little gift, a little taste of Mount Vernon. So, I'm going to ask Mistakes to come up, and Mr. Dr. Doggett? Will you please come up so that we can give the flowers to our new? Okay, you want to vote on them first? Whether we don't vote on them or not, they're going to get the flowers.
Okay. So, you ready, Taylor?
Can I please have, can you hear me?
No, we can't hear you. Not talking loud enough.
Can I please have a motion in a second to approve Human Resources Memorandum Number 63A certified?
Motion. Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
Do you want to do all the, do you want to do all the HR?
You have to do that?
Okay. I have to go to the superintendent to list the other people, my report.
Oh, you want, do you need this?
Go to the superintendent, where the people are listed.
The tab?
Mm-hmm.
I printed it, you want the printed version?
No, 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 you still vote on them.
Oh, you want it on here? Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yes, there are some people under the superintendent.
Oh, you want to do?
Yeah, so that we do give them the thing.
So, we could start with Mike Bieber? He's not here, but...
Can I please have a motion in a second to authorize a contract extension with MJB Communications?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second to authorize an employment agreement with Erica Peterson as Parent Resource Center Coordinator?
Motion.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second to authorize an employment agreement with Dr. Marie Gabiton-Swift as Diversity Equity and Inclusion Coordinator?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second to authorize an employment agreement with Jonathan Walters as Personnel Associate?
Motion. Second.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second to authorize an employment agreement with Dr. Beverly Jones as Assistant Superintendent for Administration, Climate, and Culture?
Motion. Second.
Questions, comments, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second to authorize an employment agreement with Michael Thompson as District Videographer?
Second.
Comments or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second to authorize an employment agreement with Lisa Oteary as a consultant? Questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Abstentions? Motion carries.
Now we can. Right, now we're done.
Just going to leave it alone? Okay.
Congratulations to everyone. Oh, the non-certified.
Oh, yeah, we did, we have to do that. B.C. not to get, we have to do the non-certified, too. We didn't do the non-certified.
Dr. Christopher Pierce. Congrats. Ms. Linda Palumbo. Congratulations. Congratulations. Tricia Edmund McIntosh. Jessica Van Decker. Dulce Nunez. Karen Reynolds. Bear with me if I chop this up. And a near and dear to my heart, my former student, Ms. Sparkle Dixon Richardson. A district legacy, Ms. Lisa Ludwig. Another near, dear, and a legacy, former teacher, counselor, Marie Gabiton Swift. A return to home, Dr. Beverly Jones. Mr. Thompson's renewing his contract. And a recent retiree, Ms. Lisa Oteary. And that concludes all the new hires.
I think the old trustees have a feeling about that. Just saying, some of the old trustees have a feeling.
Oh, well, you see. I was the superintendent then.
I know, right?
Okay.
All right, but we have, we have the non-certified as, B.C., we have, we have to approve the non-certified.
Yes, please, go ahead.
All right, Taylor.
Can I please have a motion in a second to approve Human Resources Memorandum Number 63B, non-certified?
Second, I'm sorry.
Any questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I run the Business Office tab now?
You didn't, you didn't put that. Did you put that? We go to the side. Was that going to happen? While we're waiting, I just want to extend a warm and hearty congratulations to all the new hires. You are in the right place at the right time. Okay, so what, Taylor, next? Business Office. Okay, go ahead.
Can I please have a motion in a second for authorization to renew an agreement with Edmonton Plato for an amount of $68,747.20? This is not, like, not stretching. This doesn't give enough.
Just take it out, you can take it out.
Is this better?
Yes. Much better.
A motion in a second for authorization to renew an agreement with Edmonton Plato for an amount of $68,747.20. Questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second for an amendment to Resolution 6.3 dated July 6, 2022, for an authorization to extend the all-county bus company contract for the 22-23 school year?
Motion. Second.
Second.
Questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second for an authorization to extend the all-county bus company contract for the 22-23 school year?
Motion.
Questions, comments, or concerns? All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second for authorization to extend the first-mile-square contract? contract for the 2022-2023 school year?
Motion.
Questions, comments and concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second for authorization to extend the First Mile Square to emergency contracts for summer of 2022?
Motion.
Questions, comments and concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second for authorization to extend an agreement, extend agreement Bergman Associate Contract RFP Number B18-04 Independent Review of Energy Performance Project Measurement and Verification Report for the Mount Vernon City School District for the 2223 fiscal year at a cost of $22,500 with additional services billed hourly?
Motion. I want to know what that's about. Is, is that something that Mr. Silver has to explain?
No, Mart, I explained it to you yesterday.
Oh, okay.
I, I'll give you a second, quickly.
A second? Okay.
I know it was brought up at another meeting about some issues over the last decade or so, I think it was, with our, the expenses for our energy for the schools. Does this, does this firm have anything to do with reviewing our energy use? No? Okay, that's because of... They weren't going, good job then. No problem.
Any further questions, comments or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second for authorization to extend suburban carting waste management contract bid 22-20, 21-22-10 for the Mount Vernon City School District for 2223 fiscal year?
Motion. Second.
Questions, comments and concerns? All in favor? I need everybody to say aye.
Aye, I'm sorry.
Aye. Yes, only vote. Any opposed? Abstentions?
I'll abstain.
Okay. Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second for authorization to extend Joe Lombardo, the plumbing contract bid 21-22-13 for Mount Vernon City School District for the 2223 fiscal year?
Motion. Second.
Any questions, comments or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second for authorization to extend renewed general construction contract bid 21-22-14 for the Mount Vernon City School District for the 2223 school year?
Motion. Second.
Any questions, comments or concerns? You, you don't have a question?
I'm sorry?
You had your hand up, I didn't know if you had a question.
I was just gonna comment the same thing, is this the company we've worked with previously already?
Yes.
Yes, I think, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I have a motion in a second for authorization to expen, extend bid 2020-21-06 Pest Control Services Contract to vendor Abalon Exterminating Company Incorporated for the Mount Vernon City School District for the 2223 fiscal year?
Motion. Second.
Any questions, comments or concerns?
Um, they, are they in every school every month?
They're in every school, but it's not every month.
How often do they come? Yeah.
Every two months.
Do they come as needed?
Mm-hmm.
And are they doing just certain type of exterminating?
Well, it depends, it depends on what they discover inside there.
Okay.
You know, because some, some of them does not really have the amount of, um...
I got you.
You're right. I do, I didn't want to say that. Exactly, so, um, right.
All right, okay. That's why I read they came every month, but... Okay, so we're, Taylor, we good?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second for authorization to extend bid 19-20-04 for various HVAC repair and maintenance services contract A to Crown AC Heat and Power for 20, for the 2223 fiscal year?
Motion. Second.
Questions, comments and concerns?
I have a question. What, what is that contract, I'm sorry that we are renewing?
Which one you just said? Oh, I'm sorry. It's, we're on eight, eight eleven. Um, for HVAC repair and maintenance services.
Oh, good.
Heat and power in the schools.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstention?
You opposed?
Opposed.
Abstentions? Motion carries.
That's eight eleven.
Can I please have a motion in a second to accept a donation of $400 for the principal at Cecil H. Parker School for Teachers Appreciation Day 2022?
Motion. Second.
Any questions, comments or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second for authorization to reject bid 2022-23-01 for landscaping and snow removal?
Motion. Second.
Questions, comments or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second for authorization to extend FMD Enterprises paving contract bid 21-22-15 for the Mount Vernon City School District for the 2223 fiscal year?
Motion. Second.
Questions, comments or concerns?
Raise an issue that I'm just wondering was, uh... I just did a little research on the company. I, I'm just wondering how we, we wound up with them over the course of time, just because they don't seem to be.
You want to pull it?
Hmm?
You want to pull it?
If you'd like to pull it, that'd be fine.
Now, do you want to pull it?
Oh, yes, that would be a good idea.
Do you want to pull it and table it for the next meeting?
Table it to the next one.
Okay. Eight fourteen, eight fourteen.
Oh, no, I just need a motion.
Motion.
To, to pull it. Okay. Everyone's in favor?
Yes.
Can I please have a motion in a second for approval of stipend for Linda Henderson as tax collection associate?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions, comments or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second for an amendment to Resolution 6.2 dated July 6, 2022, Authorization to Appoint Staff for the 2022 Summer Food Service Program?
Motion.
Questions, comments and concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second for authorization to enter into an agreement with Custom Computer Specialists Incorporated for data and network services from July 1, 2022 through June 30, 2023 in the amount of $216,282.30?
Motion. Second.
Questions, comments and concerns?
So, tell me what they're gonna do? What's, what?
Custom Computer?
Yeah, what are they, what are they gonna do?
Okay. Mr. Ramirez, you want to speak about Custom Computer and what they, they do?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Madam President, Superintendent Schools, all board trustees. Custom Computer is a contractor that provides services for the data, the student information system. We are doing a transition to a new system in the district right now, we're using Infinite Campus. In the past, we were using School Plus, and that transition is done by consultants. So this contract will cover for those services. They also support our technology and the appliances in the network, and we have two engineers that are working every day with us in terms of supporting all these appliances, switches, connectivity, internet and support.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I have a motion in a second for an amendment to Resolution 5.3 dated July 6, 2022, for the reorganizational meeting? Treasurer.
Motion. Second.
Questions, comments and concerns?
Can you explain that one?
It's an as it read and an as it should read.
Right, this was, this was, this is a deputy treasurer who's taking on some of the work of the regular treasurer, because we don't have one. So as a result of that, her stipend was increased. And, and, and we've discovered that when we do stipends, then we don't have so much overtime.
Thank you. Some motion on the floor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I have a motion in a second to authorize Seneca Consulting for administrative and financial consultation services in connection with the Affordable Care Act for the 2122 fiscal year at a cost not to exceed $10,500?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, comments and concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second for an amendment to Resolution 10.6 dated July 6, 2022, reorganizational meeting stipends for the 2223 fiscal year?
Motion. Second.
Questions, comments and concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I, run school improvement. Can I have a motion in a second for authorization to hire avid tutor coordinators?
Motion.
Any questions, comments or concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second for authorization to approve School Improvement Service Memorandum as 23-1 dated July 19, 2022?
Motion. Second.
Questions, comments and concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second for authorization to approve School Improvement Personnel Memorandum P23-2 dated July 19, 2022?
Motion. Second.
Questions, comments and concerns? All in favor? Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second for authorization to create and hire staff for a No Place For Hate District Leadership Team?
Motion.
Second.
Questions, comments and concerns?
Will this be district-wide, um, Dr. Doggett?
Yes. Yes, for every school.
Every school will be doing this? And this staff is gonna do all the schools?
We're gonna do a training, we're gonna build a calendar for the schools, and then the school teams will work throughout the school year to implement their work, and we'll give them oversight and support throughout the school year. So it'll be a part-two resolution with each school, and they'll have a small team that we'll work with, and we're looking to do this for one to two years, with hopefully that this work will be embedded over the next several years for systems of sustainability. So hopefully by the year 2023, all of our schools will be No Place For Hate schools.
All right, thank you. That's great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second for authorization to hire staff for the District RTI Design Team during the summer for the Mount Vernon City School Districts?
Motion. Second.
Questions, comments and concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Student Services? Can I please have a motion in a second for approval of Student Service Memorandum Number Two dated July 19, 2022?
Motion. Second.
Questions, comments and concerns?
That's okay. It happens to all of us.
Any questions, comments and concerns?
Um, so this is for makeup services?
10.1.
This is 10.1 student services? For makeup of services? Okay, all right.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? Um, we did the superintendent tab.
I think you did that.
Yes, so we can skip that, um, and go to...
Executive?
13.1.
Okay.
We just have...
The calendar?
Right, um, a motion in a second to approve an amendment to the Board of Education meeting schedule for the 2223 school year?
Motion.
Second.
What did we?
Um, we're moving the meeting on the 23rd to the...
It's 16. It's on the 23rd.
Okay. Okay. Just died. Just died.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Can I please have a motion in a second to enter into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person or persons?
Motion.
Second. No, we're not returning.
I need a second.
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 Before we enter executive session, um, we, on behalf of the board, the superintendent and the community, we want to thank Taylor Emanuel for her service to the district. Tonight is Taylor's last board meeting. Thank you. We're gonna miss you, and best wishes in your new endeavors.
So Taylor's gonna come and speak to us before we started that? She's gonna come speak to us before we start it then? Okay, you're gonna come in before we start it then? All right, all right, but I want you to...
Tom is here. I don't know, is he, is he coming to a meeting?
I think so, yeah, okay. So we're going into exec? How long is exec?
Um, maybe about...
We're, we're not coming back? Oh, okay.
It's maybe about an, about an hour, but we're not coming back though, because we have, um... because we have, um, Tom is here. Is Emily coming? And Emily's here.
Okay.
So...
So, we don't, we don't need to adjourn, we'll come back and adjourn.
No, we'll come back and adjourn.
We'll come back and adjourn, so you're going to stay until Tom?